Good morning and welcome to the March 25th, 2013 workshop of the Orlando City Council. Commissioners, the city supports residents who seek to live sustainable and active lifestyles. And about a year ago, we started a two-year pilot program on allowing urban chickens. And Commissioner Sheehan has been a champion of that program, and I would welcome her for a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Commissioners. And those eggs that are actually in front of you, those very, very colorful eggs are not Easter eggs. Those are actually a dozen eggs from hens all over the city of Orlando. I did buy a few from Oviedo to make your whole dozen. And again, those are all the natural color, and there's some in front of Mayor Dyer there. Those are all natural eggs from chickens, and they're all beautiful, different varieties of man. You didn't get any because I know you have your own, so...
I just brought some to Jason.
You did bring some to Jason. Excellent. So Commissioners, those are for you, and if you need to know how much those cost, they're worth $4 a dozen. So if you want to declare those on your gift... (laughter) I want to make sure we have the media here, we do everything properly. Well, first of all, Mayor, I'd like to thank you and my fellow Commissioners for keeping an open mind and allowing a pilot program to proceed in the city of Orlando. Having a pilot program for backyard chickens in the city of Orlando has resulted in a positive experience for the city overall. The program is successful and has resulted in good publicity for the city of Orlando, while negative impacts just haven't been found. The pilot program is also a good example of retail democracy. Citizens within my district were inquiring regularly as to whether backyard chickens could be allowed in the city of Orlando. As a result, it is good policy to fulfill the reasonable needs of citizens as a council. There was such latent demand for backyard chickens in our city that all the spots in the pilot program were taken within the first 24 hours. There was actually a line outside of City Hall when we had opened up. We also have a waiting list of another 25 persons that are within the allowed pilot program area, and a few other citizens inquiring from non-participating districts. As you know, the districts that are participating are districts three, four, and five. The number of inquiries that have been experienced shows that there is a general population trend towards sustainability, which in this case reduces the distance between food, sources, and consumers. Considering that we have received multiple inquiries from across Florida and the United States, it shows that we, as a city, are headed in the right direction. Many look to us as an example of how to do these programs carefully and correctly. And if y'all remember, there was a little boy in DeBarry who had autism, and they were using the chickens as therapy for him. DeBarry actually adopted our pilot program as their permanent ordinance in the city of DeBarry so that little boy could keep his chickens, and I hear he's doing very, very well. And the Hart family is very, very happy that we actually did a lot of the research for them. When controlled properly, backyard chickening does not reduce property values. In fact, jurisdictions that allow backyard chickening tend to be dominant world or emerging cities that the city of Orlando should seek to emulate. Examples: New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, and even such disparate locales as Phoenix and Honolulu. All of this leads towards implementing our larger sustainability trends appropriate to our urban environment via the Mayor's Green Works Initiative. Not only do backyard chickens allow for a food source close to home, but it also provides a whole host of other benefits, such as reducing waste because chickens eat leftovers and old lettuce and things like that. I know mine really like snow peas.[247.01][247.01](laughter) They like to eat the leftovers. Finally, chickens in limited numbers are not a nuisance and can be treated like any other pet in the home. I always equate taking care of my chickens as no more intense than having a cat, and cleaning a coop is not that much different than cleaning a cat box. I'd like to now turn this over to staff for the presentation on this topic and the video on our backyard chicken pilot program, which can be followed by a council discussion and any questions that any of you may have. During this time, I'll also be passing...well, you already have your dozen eggs, and they've been farmed from participants in the Orlando Pilot Program. That way, you can experience at home just how good these fresh eggs taste and why I'm such a proponent of this measure. And I'd also like to recognize Dennis Mudge. He's with the Orange County Extension Service. He's been doing all the inspections for us, and so if you have any questions of an actual chicken expert, he's our guy. We'll be calling him up a little bit later, but I just wanted to recognize Dennis Mudge and thank him in Orange County for being so supportive of this program. Thank you, Mayor, thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning. I'm Jason Burton. I'm a chief planner with our city planning division, and I've been affectionately called by my colleagues "The Chicken Man."[321.12][321.12](laughter) It's only because I get to work on innovative projects here at the city of Orlando, but I don't have chickens myself. I'm just here to be the manager of this program since I manage a lot of the different innovative things that happen in the city of Orlando, but I don't have chickens myself. So I've just been your eyes and ears essentially towards this program. So welcome today. Just to give you a little bit of a background, we passed a temporary use permit authorizing the pilot program on May 7th, 2012, just right after Easter. And we approved 25 households on our pilot program. And we also have two more people since I last talked to Commissioner Sheehan that are in our pilot program area, so we have a total of 27 people. It's interesting, I went ahead and started that rating list up, and folks came onto the waiting list, and within 24 hours, we had every spot filled. And over time, people dropped out of the program, and of course, we always had people that were willing to come back behind them. So I was really particular about getting people that wanted to actually participate to participate in the program. So some folks quite couldn't manage to get into the pilot program just because they dropped out.
Jason, how do you know when somebody drops out?
Well, I kind of hounded everybody and called them constantly to make sure that they wanted to participate because I just didn't want to make sure that someone was holding the position and not actually participating in the program. So regularly in touch with everybody that actually wanted to do it. The pilot program lasted for two years with a possible one-year extension by the planning official. And just so you know, chickens generally lay for about two or three years, and that kind of coincides with the actual length of our pilot program itself. And we've been copied by other jurisdictions around Florida, and we've had inquiries from across the United States as well, and I'll go over that at the end of the presentation. Why did we do a pilot program? It really allows us to assess the concept prior to doing a more permanent ordinance and really test out what works and what doesn't. It allowed folks to opt into the program, and right now, we have districts three, four, and five, and that's appropriate. We were able to work very closely, which each of the permities make sure they went through an educational component to the program, and of course, closely monitoring them to make sure that they actually participate in the pilot program, just like the mayor mentioned earlier. We met with them individually and accepted them into the pilot program, and it's really important that you have proactive people that come into City Hall, and you sit down with them to make sure that they have a good understanding of what exactly they're getting into, and that's an important characteristic of our program. Just to give you an overview of what I'm going to talk about, our classes, the coops and the chickens, CCC here. Classes are really important to running an effective program. We were lucky enough to have Dennis Mudge, the animal science coordinator with the University of Florida and the Ag Extension, help us with a couple of classes on how to do chickening. And we even had Tom Carey and Tiamir with Sundu Gardens, who kind of run a nice, interesting, sustainable garden kind of towards Biflo, out in Biflo. They also have a lot of chickens and teach classes on how to care for chickens. They helped us out as well. Anyway, we held over five Chicken Claire classes amongst those two folks, and we trained over 50 people. Many participants attended both classes just to get the different perspectives. And here's pictures from the class that I attended. I was lucky enough to go out with the Ag Extension. We had about 20 people there, and we had Palmer show up to just explain the different chicken supplies. We got to handle some chickens, and there was a great about two-hour lecture on how to take care of chickens. And you learned a whole bunch of different things in those classes. And just, here's some of the interesting tidbits that I wrote down remembering my class that I took. Since chickens are social creatures, they definitely have a pecking order to the flock, so that's why it's important to have more than...or three or more chickens, because two will peck each other to death, kind of. You've got to stick the chicken's beak into the water bowl so they know it's there. I mean, important concept. The hens will actually lay colors that are consistent with their ear colors on the sides of their head. So when you see a chicken with green ears, they're going to most likely lay green eggs. You must incorporate taking care of these chickens into your daily household routines, and Dennis was really good about this. He fed everybody before we handled the chickens, just like you might incorporate into your household routine is before you eat or after you eat, you're going to go and take care of your chickens every single night. The other thing is chickens lay, you know, approximately two to three years. In this little cartoon here, you see the chicken...these two folks are talking about how they're very sustainable, and as soon as the chicken stops laying eggs, they're going to eat her too. So the chickens go into the 7-Eleven to pick up more eggs so they don't get eaten.[636.16][636.16](laughter) Let's give you a little bit of idea for our coops. We have development standards for coops. Essentially, we require that folks be five feet from any residential property line with their coops and zero feet from their accessory structures. We also require that they be placed in the rear yard, really important. And then you place a 20-foot setback from neighboring residential structure so they're a little bit further away from folks' neighboring residential structure so you don't have to have a coop right outside your window. The structures are generally less than 20 square feet, including the coop and the run areas, and they have to be tied down for wind resistance. We just had an event yesterday, and luckily, I haven't heard of any chickens flying through the air.[677.32][677.32](pause) Oops. There we go. And just to give you an idea of some of the coops that we have that are out there, Sophia Smith's pink coop is up in the left-hand corner there, but you have various kinds of coops. And on the bottom, just so you know, there's Commissioner Sheehan's on the right, and Man Downs is on the left on the bottom there, believe it or not, and they're here today. Got your coop in there. We have a limit of three chickens. It's really the least amount of chickens to have the least amount of impact, and that's why we went ahead with having three chickens. Chickens do better as flocks due to that pecking order that I previously mentioned. No roosters are allowed. I actually had one participant that had pullets that grew them from very little tiny baby chickens, and one of her chickens, even though they were sex, turned out to be a rooster. She got rid of her chicken and gave it to a farm. So luckily, when we have a class, people are able to find out other people that do chickening in the area and what to do with their roosters should they have one. The Ag Extension agent visited people on a demand basis and advised participants on poisonous plants and how to care for their chickens in their particular yard. And here are some of the chickens themselves. Some of our folks have really interesting chickens, and some have just, you know, really plain Rhode Island red chickens. And there's a bunch of different types of colors of chickens that you can have. It's kind of interesting to see what people actually do have. Wanted to get the names of some of the chickens in the program, but just to give you an idea of some of the interesting names that we have, we have Peep, Leap, and Cheep. You recognize that's Commissioner Sheehan's, but Goat, Cow, and Pig is one of my favorite ones because (laughter) the chickens are actually named for the color. One looks like it's pink like a pig, and one's brown like a cow, and one is gray like a gold. So then you have interesting names like Scissors, Spartacus, Maximus, and even Sakura, Shajuan, Pepper, and Mandarin, and I don't know if that's going to be chickens that are going to become dishes after three years. But even you have Thing One, Thing Two, and Thing Three, and Gertrude, Hilda, and Hilga is one of our German chickens, I guess. So we have quite a variety of different names for chickens that are out there. Just to back up, why do people have chickens? It's really about sustainability trends that are national. We have folks that are interested in it from slow food, folks that are concerned about the distance between food to table, and then of course gourmet cooks, they taste better, reduces the travel time for food so they're fresher. People are concerned about the treatment of hens, and some people just like to have them as pets. And of course, they like the eggs that you get. The eggs apparently taste better. You've got some eggs in front of you to try them out, I guess, yourselves. We've gotten a lot of publicity about backyard chickens, you know, and it's been relatively good publicity, which is nice. Other cities that are following Orlando include Wynn Park, Titusville, Orange County, Lake County. These are all jurisdictions that are studying the issue, that have really taken our whole entire chicken program and started to put through their own public hearing process. DeBarry copied our pilot program and passed it into an ordinance. Bonita Springs down near Naples did the same exact thing, even Sarasota. We also had folks like Maitland. We have resident inquiries, Pensacola, Arlington Heights, Illinois, and six inquiries from households in other city of Orlando districts. And with that, we're going to turn it over to watch what I call the chicken music video. And I wanted to thank Neil and Blair from a communications staff who put it together. It has a really interesting music that goes along with it. So and after that, we'll take some questions from the council. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Let's do the video.
Let's do the video first. Okay, Neil, go ahead and roll the video.
Well, I was doing a lot of gardening. It's kind of the next natural step to kind of do chickens. I was a 4-Her growing up, but I never got into the animal side of 4-H, so it was never anything I had experience with, and it seemed like something fun and different to do.
I'd say about, maybe about 10 is about what we're getting here.
Do you get to eat them all, yet start giving them away?
No. With two of us in a household, and we're getting about, you know, we're getting two, and they'll skip a day, and then we'll get one, and, you know, and then we'll get three a day. So they don't lay every single day. People think chickens lay every day. They actually lay every 36 hours. So it kind of staggers a little bit, so you're not going to get them every single day.
Hello. We found a chicken coop designed on the Internet, and we just kind of started from scratch, went to the Home Depot, and we built it. We put hardware cloth around the bottom, and it's about a foot under the ground so nothing can dig through and get in.
No, not at all. The way that we went about it was, because you have a couple of different options, you can like dig down a couple of feet and put in the hardware cloth to kind of protect it, but we kind of stayed above ground, put in the hardware cloth, and then layered in the garden cloth, the kind of the weed blocker cloth, and then put playground sand over that so we can see any kind of potential...
But what I learned from the class was all, you know, it's a really in-depth class, and I think it's good to go to both classes because you've got an actual chicken farm that they're, you know, that they're production and everything like that. Then you've got the class, so you're actually seeing it, smelling it, dealing with, you know, what it actually is like.
Clean out a coop.
Exactly. And it's pretty intense. Of course, he's got 100 chickens. It's a little different than having three.
And then our, we actually had to get a variance because we were putting the coop next to, within the five feet of the property line, and so we had to work with our side neighbor here, and she's been great about it. She comes over every once in a while and checks and says, "Any eggs yet?" You know, because that's kind of our deal, and she'll be excited to hear that we finally are getting some eggs.
Okay. Council questions or comments?
Come on, you guys. I knew you're not going to make it that easy on me. Come on.
I think it's great. Here are a couple of concerns I have. We did a pilot program at the Christian Service Center on another event, and we were really strict on the pilot to make sure we covered all the issues that were related. What I have heard from the community is that we're allowing chickens, and it's all over the city, and I've heard probably from eight or 10 people who have not, don't have permits and aren't part of the pilot program, they're doing it. How are we kind of making sure that we have really a pilot program and making, doing all the things right so that we can look for a long-term solution?
Yeah, well, that's why I really wanted to go forward with this, because there were a lot of people that were doing it illegally, and I had heard about people in my district that were doing this illegally, and I felt it was better to have oversight of the program because some of the people who had them illegally had roosters, and that's usually where the complaints come from. This is a way to bring people into compliance who aren't doing it correctly, and, you know, I mean, I don't let mine out of the coop ever, and you're not really supposed to let them out unless...
Very easy question. Ever they just grow from seed, you just stick a seed in the ground?
And, you know, I just, this is part of why I wanted to do this, was to bring people actually into compliance. There are some people that have them, I understand, that have not come into compliance, but I know that Commissioner Stewart, especially in College Park, we heard of a couple of folks that actually came into compliance, and, you know, they're really enjoying participating in the program. That way, we've got some oversight of it. Commissioner Lyman brought up some concerns about chickens running around loose in Paramore. We certainly don't, we do not approve of that. But the thing is, the people who are in this program are the ones that are doing it correctly. If you get them in the program and teach them how to do it correctly, we have a tremendous amount of success. And Commissioner Lyman, you asked a question about if people are hungry in Paramore, all these chickens are running around loose, why aren't they eating them? It's not good to eat them, and after they're eight weeks old, they become too tough to really eat, so that's why, that's why they're not going ahead and putting the chicken in the pot, so to speak, because once they become older, they're actually tough. So you can't eat them once they become older, so... But there actually is a market. This is another thing that people have asked me, "What do you do when they become older?" I'll never be able to part with my girls. I mean, they really are my pets, but I want to be able to stagger and, you know, different birds with the flock so I can continue having, laying. But as Dennis Mudge has said, there's actually places where they will take spent hens as for people to have as pets. And like I say, there's this community of people who do this, and you can find a place to. If you want to adopt your chickens out, you can do that. So I know there's some concern about people not doing this properly, and I would advocate that the way to do this properly is to bring people in under this program, have them come through the classes, teach them how to do it right. One of our city employees who has some rental property said he actually had some people keeping chickens on a carport. I mean, I think that's terrible. So we don't want to encourage that kind of thing, and I think by doing this, we can get people to do it the right way. And I hate to tell you, but I've talked to the Extension Service, and everybody has hens in their, everybody has chickens in their district already. Some people just aren't complying, and I'd rather bring people into compliance and make sure they're doing it properly.
How do we bring them into compliance in the, I mean, we've got 25...
They have to come in, get the, you know, come in...
I know, but we've got 25 in the pilot. I mean, do we expand the pilot?
Well, if we expand it, yeah. I mean, you're getting ahead of me, Commissioner Stewart, but I'm glad to say that I would either like to expand this in increments of 25, since we have 50 people, you know, if we had 25, 27 on the waiting list, if we could go up to 100. I've already talked to Extension Service. They said they can certainly do the classes, and if anybody's not doing it properly, they can then come under code enforcement like anything else. You know, I think the rules are very stringent here. I know there were some concerns about going forward with this, and I think we've put some really good safeguards in place to make sure people are doing it right. But I'd like to either see us do 100 households perhaps, see if we can adopt it citywide, because I've had, I've had some folks say from some other districts, you know, gee, I used to be your district and I'm not anymore, but now I can't have hens, and they're kind of disappointed. So, you know, if we could kind of make it fair so people can do it with the proper oversight. Of course, if there's overarching rules, like in a neighborhood association that has, you know, or condo association, or we couldn't, you couldn't have in condos anyway, no multifamilies allowed to have these. But if you had a situation where it was banned by a neighborhood already, then of course, then their rules would apply over this. But, you know, I just, like I say, we have not had one problem with implementing this, and the only problems my chickens have had have been with my dog, so trying to get her accustomed to it. So again, it's been nothing but positive, and I haven't even heard about anybody having predator problems, I mean, which is kind of surprising because we do have so many raccoons in the city.
Well, my biggest concern is, I mean, I agree with you. I think we can expand it. I think the idea of going to 25 originally was, do we have enough in the capacity of training to do that? And I think we probably have figured out that we probably do. We probably would add some set classes and bring them on, you know, 10 a quarter or something like that until we get to a capacity, which I would, big idea. But I will promise you, I don't know how many are in College Park, but I will bet you there is 8, 10, 12 that are just, because they read the paper, and the paper says we allow chickens, they think that we can now allow chickens, and they aren't quite following what we want as good urban, like if you want to call it that, good urban, a good urban program for everybody's benefit. I appreciate your leadership on it personally, and appreciate the sensitivity to making sure what we're doing is right for the city and right for the citizens, so...
Well, I'll be honest with you, Commissioner, I don't think a lot of these people probably came on after the fact. A lot of these folks were actually doing it beforehand.
Oh, I agree. I agree. And I think, but it's hard to bring them back in compliance without having some way to expand, and we knew that was the case going in.
Sure. Absolutely. And like I say, we wanted to do it on a limited basis. I know that I brought it to you, you know, quickly. I was working on a sense of urgency because I wanted to take care of some friends', you know, pets while they were away. I kind of did spring it on you, and I apologize for that, but, you know, I ended up going ahead and getting my own, and I like having my own girls because I'm very, very attached to them. And raising them by hand like that, they're very, very tame. They actually come when I call them. I mean, it's, they are like pets. I mean, and it's no different, I think, than really having a cat or a dog. I mean, my dog barks more than my chickens make noise. I mean, that's what I'm saying, I think it's, we're really putting a lot of restrictions on this appropriately because people are concerned about, you know, roosters crowing and things like that. Now, if someone is not in compliance and is not doing this appropriately or does not have a permit, it would then go to code enforcement. So if anybody's not doing this right, and then we could, you know, encourage them to get into compliance and work with the... And then I would say that's when we need to really work closely with Orange County to make sure to get those people that are not doing it right to do it correctly. But for the most part, the people who are in this program, I mean, they're really involved, they're really interested, they're building very, very designer coops. I mean, and they're really cute. One person called it, you know, Egg Drop Coop. I mean, they have really cute names. I mean, this is very much a backyard thing, and you go in these backyards, and I was talking to Dennis Mudge, and he says that the interesting thing is people have all these great backyards with all these themes and things like that, and their chickens are really a part of it, and they really are part of the family and part of their pets. So again, it's just a fun thing. And something else, y'all, a lot of you might not know, but I worked for the Florida Department of Agriculture for 12 years. You know, you can take the girl out of agriculture, but you can't take agriculture out of the girl. And I just think this whole thing with the growing food in the yard, eggs, fresh eggs and all that is part of this whole sustainability, and if we can get everybody doing it, they're saying right now that so many people are participating in sustainable agriculture that there's actually two less truckloads a month going out of California of produce because people are actually producing it themselves. And I think that's good. Get it off the rails, use less gas, you know, make sure we're providing things more sustainable. Another thing, if you're actually consuming food that's kind of grown in your yard, so to speak, you're less likely to have allergies, and, you know, people worry about chickens and disease and salmonella. Because these chickens are so well cared for, you won't get salmonella. You could actually probably eat these eggs raw, and you will not have any problem with getting disease, as opposed to chickens that are kept in a factory setting where they're very, if, and a lot of people think chickens are dirty because they're driven by chicken farms. Those chickens are kept in dreadful conditions. They're on top of each other. There's a large buildup of ammonia from waste and everything like that. I mean, I'm cleaning out this coop three times a week, and these chickens are probably better cared for than some kids, but, you know, it's very, very clean. There's no smell, and my neighbors didn't even know that I had chickens until they saw me on television and wanted to come see them. So we really haven't had a whole lot of problems or anything like that.
Commissioner Haines.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner, great presentation, and Jason, you guys have done a great job in really pulling this together. Now, you mentioned about some of the people that dropped out of the program. How many actually dropped out, and why did they drop out?
I had about 10 to 12 people drop out of the program, and then we backflowed other people that were interested in the program. But there were various reasons. For instance, some folks went on vacation at the end of the summer, so they didn't have time to get up and started with the program, so they went ahead and dropped out. To people that as soon as they go through the education component of the program, they realize that they're not good candidates to continue to even have chickens. So I think that's really important, that as we have an education component to the program and people come in for a little 15-minute with us at City Hall to make sure we locate their coops correctly, and naturally, that process starts to filter out people. And people may or may not be ready to take on this challenge of doing urban chickening. So it runs a gamut in terms of why people actually want to do it or don't want to do it, but there's no lack of volunteers to actually try to do it, I think, in the future.
Okay. And neighborhoods or homeowners associations, what kind of feedback did you get from them throughout? you get from them throughout the city, specifically for those areas like District Six where we didn't opt in, we opted out?
I really didn't get any negative feedback from anybody inside of the city, we got really good, positive feedback, I got maybe two or three calls from people in really disparate places around central Florida, whether they were in Apopka or Biflo or other places that just really thought it wasn't proper to have chickens inside of the city, but no one in particular inside of our city calling us up and saying, hey, we really have a, a problem with it. I don't know what the rest of the council's experience has been, but we as staff have not really received any complaints inside the city.
Did you get any surveys, or did you reach out to them to see how they may have felt about this particular project? And, and the reason I ask that, because really, why study this any further? And also, why not proceed with an ordinance?
Okay, sure.
Commissioner, if I may, actually, the reason I started this was because I was getting inquiries from my neighborhood associations. It started in Lake Davis, and Mike and Carol Wilson, a lot of you know them, they're on Metro Plan, they were very interested in this program, they're, they're participants. Colonial Town, I had a great deal of interest from folks in Colonial Town, so it was kind of coming up from the, the folks themselves. I, I know that if you kind of go in and, and, and talk to people about it, first they think it's a little crazy, and I'm like, what are you doing with chickens, but then they get to educate themselves more about it, and I have to really commend Dennis Mudge and the Orange County Extension Service, I mean, this is a very in-depth class, if, Dennis has actually brought his, his, some of his curriculum with him, but it's very, it's a very, very in-depth class, so if people have any concerns, it's usually because they think that, you know, these chickens are going to be running wild, and it's not going to be contained and everything like that, and this is, like I say, this is a very, very good way of doing this, there's not any problems, and if people have concerns, I would invite them to send a representative to the classes and really see what's going on, and understand the issue, because usually when people are upset about something, it's because they don't understand it, and I think knowledge is power, and if we educate people on this, and I'll be glad to go to any neighborhood meetings, y'all, in your districts, if you'd like me to, because I'm very passionate about this, and talk about this, this program if you'd like, if you need me to kind of help out, I'll make that commitment to you because, like I say, I'm very passionate about this.
Yeah, and, and you know, the, the thing is, for me, I guess, if we do have an ordinance, and then there is an HOA say, but we don't want them in our neighborhood, you know, what's going to proceed over the other? You know, because we don't want any conflict within the HOAs, where you have one family that says, yes, we want them, but the HOA said, but we don't want them in our neighborhood.
Yeah, as you know, there's several homeowners associations that are mandatory, and they have what's called codes, covenants, and restrictions, which are third-party agreements that the city does not enforce. In other words, when somebody has a chicken inside of an HOA that has a CCNR that prohibits it, we don't get involved in that, that's a civil dispute between those particular people. I'm not familiar with very many homeowners associations that specifically address this issue, but I would imagine that over time, they may actually start to address these types of things, and of course, it's at the pleasure of the council in your particular district, whether or not we want to actually go and survey those particular homeowners associations to see how they feel and whether they're going to deal with this particular issue in the future. The idea, of course, why we did the pilot is because we thought we could control the nuisances that most people thought that they would typically have in the, in the pilot program with all the different safeguards that we put into place.
Well, and, and again, as relates with proceeding with an ordinance, you know, your pilot program has caused other cities to go out and adopt the ordinance, and we're still checking this thing out. I mean, have we checked it out enough already? And are you guys ready to proceed? Your presentation convinced me that, from the city's perspective, that we need to do this.
Do you want to opt District Six in, Commissioner?
You know, if I had the power to opt all districts in, I'd do that.
Certainly, we as a staff will do it at the pleasure of the council, we can do a pilot program, we continue with that, it just depends on the direction you want to give us.
Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, good morning. I, I don't want anybody in Paramore eating the chickens there, I never would recommend it. We've had chickens in Paramore, I think, almost over ten years, Mike, it's been a long time, and it's for cultural reasons, for religious rituals, it has nothing to do with laying eggs, eating eggs, and we've had to get critter catchers to come in, remove them, and they come back, and we kind of know who the people are, but they don't have the names or, or tags on the chickens, so our, our eyes and ears are the neighbors, and Ms. Kennedy is the main one, every time I go to church to see her, I sort of tick off running like a criminal, because I don't want to, Ms. Kennedy, go to a funeral, there she is, asking me about chickens. So, that's a, a, a situation that's out of control, but we kind of know what's going on, and been aware of it, have been working on it for many, many, many years, but it is not a clean, good situation at all. And they're not interested in coops, and they're not interested in, in this program.
Okay, and Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, I don't have a problem with this either way, because I grew up in a farm, as funny as it may sound, in Puerto Rico, but I do, I have checked with my district, and as been my experience, most people don't want, though, I do have some people that do want them, and some of them used to live on what used to be your district. So, I would propose, I mean, we have elections every two years, why don't we do a referendum? That's why I don't include this in the ballot. And then, we'll have the will of the people, and, and instead of us playing around with the idea of who we're going to please or who we're not going to please, this is a, right now, what I've seen so far is a demonstration, a great demonstration, but it's a small group of people, and, and to tell you the truth, I see, I see you on the video, I wish you had not been in there and, and seen more of other people, examples of other people giving us their opinion, because I don't want the public to think that this is biased, I don't want people to think that this is coming mainly from City Hall, I want this to come from the people. And as I said before, I could go either way, I don't have a problem with this, but I want to hear the people.
And Commissioner, you know, I mean, there's just some things that, that you're passionate about, I'm, I'm passionate about diversity, I'm passionate about civil rights, I mean, there's certain things that I'm going to be biased on, and I am biased about this, but, you know, I gotta, I have to tell you, whenever we do something in City Hall, I hear from people that are upset about it, okay? And I have to tell you, the number of emails that I got from people who are upset about this were less than ten, and, and they were from Apopka and Orange County, I sent them all to Jason, so it's not like I'm trying to hide anything here, usually if somebody's upset about something, like I say, you'll hear from them, as a matter of fact, we're more likely to hear from people, as you all know, who are against something than for something. And I say, I, I would propose that less than ten people complaining about this, out of a city of two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand, I think I've done my due diligence, and if we put everything we did on the ballot, we would never get anything done. So, I mean, if you, if you, if you have so much pause with it, that you're so concerned about it, I would just prefer to opt out than to stop something that I'm really feeling in my district is a huge movement, and I've, you know, been out in my neighborhood associations, I'm feeling the desire, so.
But in a true form of government, and in a particular case like this, where you're going to have such controversy, why would it hurt to put it in a ballot?
Commissioner, I just, I just think it's, there's some things that we should just go ahead and do, but, you know, if, I, I really don't think this rises to the level of a, of a ballot initiative, because A, it had, there haven't been any problems, it hasn't been a concern, I would say that rather than that, if you would prefer to do some kind of a survey, that that might be appropriate at this level, rather than rise this to the level of, of a ballot initiative, I, I just think it's kind of, I, frankly, I don't think this is that big of an issue to rise to that level. I don't know if my colleagues feel that way, but I just think this is something that we can manage very simply with a hundred households.
Well, I still have to represent my district, most of my district don't want this, and I don't want this to appear as being my decision in, in the terms of, I want this to be something that is for the people, and when the people are deciding, and we represent the people, and in your district, and I'm glad that that happens in your district, that most people want it, but in my district, I have, I have a problem that I have, most people don't want it, but I do have a few that do want it, and I don't want, you know, if this is something that's going to happen in the city as a whole, well, let's, but, let's make it a decision of, of the people.
And, like I say, Commissioner, if you would, if you would feel more comfortable, if, I would be glad to give a presentation to the neighborhood associations or, or people that are concerned about this, you know, I'd, I would be glad to do that, but like I say, I mean, if I really felt something rose, if, if I thought this issue rose to the level of a ballot initiative, I would support it, but I, I, I just don't think that it's, it's to that level, I'm concerned if we put too many things on the ballot, that people will stop showing an interest in voting. And, as you, as you see from the last election, there were a lot of ballot initiatives in the legislature, and people simply didn't vote on them, and I hate to bog down the ballot with something this, you know, frankly, I just really don't feel it rises to that level.
Actually, I don't know the last time, Commissioner Lyman, you've been here the longest, I don't know when the city actually has done an initiative on the ballot. Okay, I have a question.
State mayor, you know, the pigs.
Oh, the state's put them on, and the county's put them on, but I don't know, at least since I've been here, this, we haven't had one in the city. Jason and Dennis can pop up there just for a second. Okay, we have twenty-five, we have twenty-seven people on the waitlist, I think it's kind of unfair to people that are in Commissioner Stewart's district, I guess, that think they can raise chickens, but, or have chickens, but they aren't in compliance, but they can't become compliant because we don't have slots that are open for them, so I think it would be fair to expand the pilot to some number. Can you get to a hundred and still do what you're doing, Jason, and Dennis, can you do the classes for a hundred? Is that a verb, verbal?
Mayor?
Just to let you know what the time commitment for me as a staff person is, I meet with everyone individually, and it takes about fifteen minutes a person to just go over their plans, make sure that they've actually attended the classes, and that's about the level of time commitment that we have to do. We do a planning official determination for each one of the participants that are in the program, and going forward, we would still, even if we had a permanent ordinance, it's important to make sure that people have that educational component, and that their plans are somewhat reviewed, so we know that they're in compliance. Anything less than that, then you, you're stuck in a situation, we've got chickens in carports, and they're really in the improper place, so it's really important to have that component to the program.
Commissioner Stewart.
I, I would recommend, I don't know if Mayor Fowlesworth, we've set twenty-five as first, and my thought was, when we first did this, well, we probably should have done twenty-five per participating district, in other words, that will allow a maximum of a hundred and fifty as the pilot, that would give us plenty of breadth throughout the city, and if we stick to the current three that we have, that's seventy, if we go from twenty-five to seventy-five, that's enough adequate, and then expand it up to a hundred and fifty. Twenty-five in my district will, will be in a variety of locations that I think is a good pilot number. Four or five probably isn't quite broad enough, and a hundred is too much, but I think twenty-five gives a chance to be in some older traditional neighborhoods, some newer neighborhoods. So, I mean, I'm thinking, if we just expand to twenty-five each, and then let each district kind of opt in during the pilot, until such time we get a chance to study it, will allow us to expand it, and then if we want to expand it again, expand it again, and again, based upon what capacity that you have, is what my thought was.
Sounds pretty good, Commissioner. Man, procedurally, we can't take action at a workshop, how do we go about modifying the pilot program? Is that by planning official, or is that by my action, or do we need to bring it to council?
I actually wasn't finished with my comments, so if I could make a, I had, because y'all are asking some questions, I actually, I was actually going to finish up with.
Let Man answer this question.
Okay, but the procedure perhaps.
Or actually, why don't let Man consult, and Commissioner, you finish your.
I'll finish my comment, so, before I finish, I would just like to thank someone at, here at council.
You can put it in, we do not leave a delegation to the city officials since it was a new project, that really wouldn't be good delegation by you, so you can bring it up at New Business if you so desire, otherwise, we can proceed however you'd like.
Okay.
Well, and Commissioners, I mean, we could not have done this without the Orange County Extension Service, and what a lot of people don't know is not only does Dennis Mudge help with this urban chicken program, he also helps with the Lake Yola swans, so I wanted to honor him in a special way. This is the first ever Bird Brain Award. Presented to Dennis Mudge, the multi-county livestock agent three, and knower of all things foul, with grateful appreciation for assisting with our urban chicken pilot program and the care of our beautiful Lake Yola swans, with sincere appreciation and gratitude, Orlando City Commissioner Patty Shinn.
Can I just share a couple things with you? My number of chicken calls have gone out of sight, and it's not just people here in Orlando and Orange County, it's around the country that are calling me, asking about this, there are so many people interested, this is a nationwide thing, it really is going on big time, and I'm telling you one thing, people, I'm holding back at the people who want to move ahead with this, I'm saying to them, wait for the Commissioners, they're doing this right, y'all wait, I'm getting a lot of calls from people who want to have chickens. Now, in the position I set, if there's a cow out, they call me, and I direct them to the right place, if there's chickens in the neighborhood, they call me, and I direct them to the right place. I don't just help people with their chickens, I help them with problems as well. And Commissioner Ortiz, I'm not getting the calls about the problems, I'm getting the calls with people who want in, who say, I want to have fresh eggs too, and that's the God knows truth, just a lot of people are very interested, and you know what's great about this? Look how good we're all looking this whole thing, everybody, and it's, because we're doing a real worthwhile thing, a lot of families, a lot of folks really happy, and thank you so much, I can't believe this is great, I appreciate it. My colleagues will get a big chuckle out of this, you know, I have a master's in animal science, and I was known as a cattleman before this, and now my colleagues are calling me the Chicken Man, just like you, but, it's okay, it's been, it's been great.
Well, it's time to write a book and take advantage of it. All right, Commissioner, she get anything further?
Yeah, yeah, I do, Mayor, and this is kind of, we kind of jumped ahead a little bit, but I'd like to expand the program from three to four chickens per household. There is a need that should one of your chickens demise or reach the age when they no longer lay eggs, you can stagger your flock with a new addition while phasing egg production for personal use, so, just to expand that just a little bit, and again, one more chicken's really not going to make that much difference. Personally, I'd like to expand the pilot to a maximum of one hundred homes, which would be seventy-five additional. I know that some of my fellow Commissioners have concerns about loose chickens within their districts, the proper way to do this is through the education component embedded within our program while bringing citizens into compliance. Further, due to the education component and strict layout procedures for coops, the administrative process we set up, it's not necessary to have inspections for all of the coops, and let the Extension Service go ahead and inspect the ones where people really need help. In my conversations with the Extension Agent, we have some of the best cared-for chickens in the world, in the chicken seminars, people make great connections with other members of the community, that creates a great support network for this hobby. Finally, I advocate that we as a city not just have a pilot, but adopt an ordinance that allows backyard chickens through the process we set up. Several jurisdictions have copied our program, and there's a finite amount of persons that are interested in the program citywide. It's more important for us to set rules for compliance with this program that everyone can follow equitably across the city. The rules are also set up such that backyard chickening is not a right, it's not a right, but a privilege that can be revoked if someone doesn't do it properly. And these, these are criteria of education, proper coop placement, and maintenance of the flock, so see if some of the things y'all brought up, I was, I was actually going to address. In the immediate future, I'm asking that we vote to direct the city staff to bring forward to the city council a proposal to expand the program from three to four chickens per household, and to bring at least fifty additional households into our backyard urban chicken pilot program, but I actually like Commissioner Stewart's twenty-five per district, I'd like to see as many opportunities as possible. I'd also like to ask city staff to visit the idea of changing this from a pilot program to a city ordinance that would allow this program to go citywide. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, good report on this pilot program, and what we'll do is, we won't bring it this afternoon, next city council meeting, we'll bring proposed modifications to the pilot program and have a discussion about whether we want to pursue an ordinance at this point.
And thank you, Mayor, and again, those, those eggs are not dyed, those are the, those are the color that these hens lay them, and, and I, Commissioner Ortiz, you go ahead and eat a few of those and see if I don't win you over.
I don't have a problem with it, I said, you know, I, I couldn't woo with this.
So, that concludes the workshop of the Orlando City Council for today.